Good morning. We will begin momentarily. Please maintain silence in the audience as well as at the dais for the next 20 seconds. All right. Good morning and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Monday, September 22nd, 2025. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please say present for roll call. Commissioner Narik Katz.
Present.
President Richard Katz.
Present.
Vice President McGlaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Pinder.
Present.
For board members, a quorum is present. Vice President.
Good morning. Richard said he can't be with us today. My ego is happy because I get to play king for the day. But as many of you know, tomorrow is Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, a time to be reminded that this season is about renewal and about accountability, values that I think really resonate deeply with our work here at DWP as we recommit ourselves to stewarding resources widely and building a future where every person in Los Angeles has access to safe, reliable water and affordable, sustainable energy. In my last two and a half years here, we've made some really major recommitments to maintaining our water and power system, to recycling our local water supply, committing ourselves to 100% green energy, all while making sure equity remains at the center of our organization and of all our decisions. So, the Shana Tova, in that same spirit of renewal, I want to share that this will be my last month on the board. I asked the mayor for her permission to resign for personal reasons, and she very graciously accepted. And I'm really grateful to my partners here on the board and to our senior staff for all the work they've been doing over the last few months in the background to make this transition as smooth as possible for the agency and for me. My final meeting will be October 14th, and when I am here for that, I'll have more to say about my departure. But for now, I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much to all of you. It's been the honor of a lifetime to work alongside more than 10,000 incredibly dedicated men, women, and gender nonconforming partners here at the Department. A little emotional to keep this system strong and the city moving so that Los Angeles can remain a place where people from all walks of life and all parts of the world can come to live out their dream. And with that, we will begin the meeting.
Are you able to? You want to take a break?
I'm about to. In three weeks, I'm taking a big break. Excuse me. Shante, who do we have for general public comment today?
We have approximately... We have about 10 speakers. Public comment is now open at this time to the people providing public comment. When it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You'll have two minutes per item, up to five minutes total. If you are speaking on a specific item, you must stay on topic. Otherwise, your time will be forfeited. The first speaker is Greg Fleming, who will then be followed by Madeline Janis.
Greg at PAFCO, speaking on Agenda Item Number 10. We are a safe company. We commit time and money towards that end. For example, we've installed dual-facing cameras with AI technology for driver safety, cranes and ladders on trucks, welded steps to trailers to exit safely, constant training addressing our biggest safety concerns, stretch and flex programs, safety observation reports, a dedicated safety professional, and a committee to promote safety goals. September 9th, your Safety Department stated the Water Department made the decision to go with SE Pipeline due to our grade, and Safety supported that decision. Eight safety variances have already been granted to other companies this year. Water chose not to pursue a variance. Safety didn't deny it. But nothing's changed between our contract approval May 13th and today. Water knew on the front end we wouldn't need a variance and still recommended our contract for approval. This board asked how DWP compared to the rest of your peers. The average injury rate was 1.7 and DWP was twice as high. The question before you, isn't it possible for a small business like ourselves to be both a safe company and higher than the industry average as well? Why is this scorecard so black and white that DWP is prepared to spend 1.27 million more for these services, leaving you with a sole-source contractor who will undoubtedly inflate their rates in the future? Why don't your staff ever respond to me? You should be concerned this Water's decision has to do with preference rather than safety. Now, we're in breach of contract. Had we known DWP would pursue this course of action, we would have protested because we believe SE doesn't even meet the SBE participation requirement. Remember, the Notice of Intent to Award was issued a week after the award. But how could we protest when this notice was posted after? The path chosen is nothing short of procedurally unfair. When we have a small business like ourselves being thrown out in this fashion, I think you have some issues to address. There is another course of action that makes sense. Approve our variance, execute the contract. This amendment is wrong, and the board has the opportunity today to correct this mistake. We made significant efforts to address safety, and we believe we deserve this variance. Furthermore, our current X-Mon factor is actually lower than SE's. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
The next speaker is Madeline Janis, who will be followed by Fatima Murrieta.
Hi, I'm Madeline Janis. I'm the Executive Director of Jobs to Move America and also a lifelong DWP customer. JMA is a national nonprofit organization that conducts rigorous and independent research on the manufacturing economy. JMA works both in California and the South, where a large portion of clean tech manufacturing, including many of your vendors, operate. For two years, JMA has been investigating the actions and impacts of Alabama-based Neptune Technologies, which make smart water meters purchased by you. Research... The report that we are presenting to you today had a research team led by a PhD and a former investigative journalist. The research team surveyed 23% of Neptune's workforce, which was difficult and time-consuming. The team dug deeply into Neptune's environmental impact. Alabama, as you may know, is one of the most environmentally deregulated states in the U.S., which is why many companies locate there. Every word in this report that you will receive in a minute was reviewed by experts, environmental and labor lawyers. It is based on the facts. You're going to hear about discriminatory and unfair treatment of workers and callous treatment of the surrounding communities, which are majority-black. As a lifelong Angelino, what you do about this matters a lot because the U.S. government and the state of Alabama do not care about workers or the environment. And so, DWP needs to take responsibility. You can take responsibility for buying equipment from companies that treat their workers and communities with responsibility and respect. I share your commitment to rebuilding our region after the LA fires. My son's Altadena home burnt to the ground in January. Smart water meters, which is the product that this company produces, are going to be part of the solution to rebuilding better, as your ratepayer advocate recently blogged about. Let's do this right. You have a chance to have a win-win situation with your purchasing. Please agendize this formally, investigate it, and take action. As an attorney, I know that the rules allow you to do this. So, we urge you, take action on this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm aware that we have a few speakers on the roll who'll be speaking on this same topic. We'll address the topic after everyone's had a chance to speak.
The next speaker is Fatima Murrieta, who will be followed by Teto Hueso.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Fatima Murrieta, and I'm a Senior Organizer with Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America. I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America.
Good morning. We will begin momentarily. Please maintain silence in the audience as well as at the dais for the next 20 seconds. All right. Good morning and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Monday, September 22nd, 2025. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please say present for roll call. Commissioner Narik Katz.
Present.
President Richard Katz. Commissioner Leir.
Present.
Vice President McGlaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Pinder.
Present.
For board members, a quorum is present. Vice President.
Good morning. Richard said he can't be with us today. My ego is happy because I get to play king for the day. But as many of you know, tomorrow is Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, a time to be reminded that this season is about renewal and about accountability, values that I think really resonate deeply with our work here at DWP as we recommit ourselves to stewarding resources widely and building a future where every person in Los Angeles has access to safe, reliable water and affordable, sustainable energy. In my last two and a half years here, we've made some really major recommitments to maintaining our water and power system, to recycling our local water supply, committing ourselves to 100% green energy, all while making sure equity remains at the center of our organization and of all our decisions. So, the Shana Tova, in that same spirit of renewal, I want to share that this will be my last month on the board. I asked the mayor for her permission to resign for personal reasons, and she very graciously accepted. And I'm really grateful to my partners here on the board and to our senior staff for all the work they've been doing over the last few months in the background to make this transition as smooth as possible for the agency and for me. My final meeting will be October 14th, and when I am here for that, I'll have more to say about my departure. But for now, I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much to all of you. It's been the honor of a lifetime to work alongside more than 10,000 incredibly dedicated men, women, and gender nonconforming partners here at the Department. Ooh, a little emotional to keep this system strong and the city moving so that Los Angeles can remain a place where people from all walks of life and all parts of the world can come to live out their dream. And with that, we will begin the meeting.
Are you able to? You want to take a break?
I'm about to. In three weeks, I'm taking a big break. Excuse me. Shante, who do we have for general public comment today?
We have approximately... We have about 10 speakers. Public comment is now open at this time to the people providing public comment. When it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You'll have two minutes per item, up to five minutes total. If you are speaking on a specific item, you must stay on topic. Otherwise, your time will be forfeited. The first speaker is Greg Fleming, who will then be followed by Madeline Janis.
Greg at PAFCO, speaking on Agenda Item Number 10. We are a safe company. We commit time and money towards that end. For example, we've installed dual-facing cameras with AI technology for driver safety, cranes and ladders on trucks, welded steps to trailers to exit safely, constant training addressing our biggest safety concerns, Stretch and Flex program, safety observation reports, a dedicated safety professional, and a committee to promote safety goals. September 9th, your Safety Department stated the Water Department made the decision to go with SE Pipeline due to our grade, and Safety supported that decision. Eight safety variances have already been granted to other companies this year. Water chose not to pursue a variance. Safety didn't deny it. But nothing's changed between our contract approval May 13th and today. Water knew on the front end we wouldn't need a variance and still recommended our contract for approval. This board asked how DWP compared to the rest of your peers. The average injury rate was 1.7 and DWP was twice as high. The question before you, isn't it possible for a small business like ourselves to be both a safe company and higher than the industry average as well? Why is this scorecard so black and white that DWP is prepared to spend 1.27 million more for these services, leaving you with a sole-source contractor who will undoubtedly inflate their rates in the future? Why don't your staff ever respond to me? You should be concerned this Water's decision has to do with preference rather than safety. Now, we're in breach of contract. Had we known DWP would pursue this course of action, we would have protested because we believe SE doesn't even meet the SBE participation requirement. Remember, the Notice of Intent to Award was issued a week after the award. But how could we protest when this notice was posted after? The path chosen is nothing short of procedurally unfair. When we have a small business like ourselves being thrown out in this fashion, I think you have some issues to address. There is another course of action that makes sense. Approve our variance, execute the contract. This amendment is wrong, and the board has the opportunity today to correct this mistake. We made significant efforts to address safety, and we believe we deserve this variance. Furthermore, our current X-Mon factor is actually lower than SE's. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
The next speaker is Madeline Janis, who will be followed by Fatima Murrieta.
Hi, I'm Madeline Janis. I'm the Executive Director of Jobs to Move America and also a lifelong DWP customer. JMA is a national nonprofit organization that conducts rigorous and independent research on the manufacturing economy. JMA works both in California and the South, where a large portion of clean tech manufacturing, including many of your vendors, operate. For two years, JMA has been investigating the actions and impacts of Alabama-based Neptune Technologies, which make smart water meters purchased by you. Research... The report that we are presenting to you today had a research team led by a PhD and a former investigative journalist. The research team surveyed 23% of Neptune's workforce, which was difficult and time-consuming. The team dug deeply into Neptune's environmental impact. Alabama, as you may know, is one of the most environmentally deregulated states in the U.S., which is why many companies locate there. Every word in this report that you will receive in a minute was reviewed by experts, environmental and labor lawyers. It is based on the facts. You're going to hear about discriminatory and unfair treatment of workers and callous treatment of the surrounding communities, which are majority-black. As a lifelong Angelino, what you do about this matters a lot because the U.S. government and the state of Alabama do not care about workers or the environment. And so, DWP needs to take responsibility. You can take responsibility for buying equipment from companies that treat their workers and communities with responsibility and respect. I share your commitment to rebuilding our region after the LA fires. My son's Altadena home burnt to the ground in January. Smart water meters, which is the product that this company produces, are going to be part of the solution to rebuilding better, as your ratepayer advocate recently blogged about. Let's do this right. You have a chance to have a win-win situation with your purchasing. Please agendize this formally, investigate it, and take action. As an attorney, I know that the rules allow you to do this. So, we urge you, take action on this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm aware that we have a few speakers on the roll who'll be speaking on this same topic. We'll address the topic after everyone's had a chance to speak.
The next speaker is Fatima Murrieta, who will be followed by Teto Hueso.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Fatima Murrieta, and I'm a senior organizer of Jobs to Move America.
I'm aware that we have a few speakers on the roll who'll be speaking on this same topic. We'll address the topic after everyone's had a chance to speak.
The next speaker is Fatima Murrieta, who will be followed by Teto Huazo.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Fatima Murrieta, and I'm a Senior Organizer with Jobs to Move America. And I'm a native Angelino and a longtime DWP customer. In my role, I work alongside labor and community partners to make sure that public investments like those DWP makes creates good jobs, resilient communities, and safe workplaces, which is why I'm here with you today. We have serious concerns about longtime DWP vendor Neptune Technologies. 78% of surveyed Neptune workers reported a serious injury, fueled by extended hours, forced overtime, and unsafe production quotas. Neptune's workers deserve environmental, racial, and labor justice. You are the decision-makers and can change the lives of the working poor in Alabama. We do believe in smart water meters and protecting our environment in Southern California, and you have the ability to improve the conditions of the working poor. We urge you to read the report, to take action, and use your contract oversight authority to investigate these alarming findings and agendize a full and transparent report back to the Commission because, as California, the golden state, we set the gold standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Fatima.
The next speaker is Teto Huazo, who will be followed by Triana Trailer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. My name is Teto Huazo. I'm the Western States Director for Jobs to Move America. I'm also a lifelong Angelino and proud DWP ratepayer. I want to start off by first just thanking the Commission for your attention to this and really thanking staff for their quick response. We published this report a little more than a week and a half ago and have already been able to have meetings, share our concerns with agency officials. We really appreciate the quick response on this and can't overstate just how important and outsized the utility's role, not just on water meters but on manufactured equipment sort of all over the country, really plays. And I want to put a fine point on this because we're all seeing and experiencing a lot of the same thing. Our public institutions are being slashed. Faith in local government, in big government, is at an all-time low. There is no sort of above the utility in this situation. Your role is incredibly important in impacting the lives of working people and the environment in a place that is very much different from Los Angeles, where our mayor has shown a lot of leadership on how we live our values, how we respond to our current, not just climate crisis, but constitutional crisis that we're all sort of going through. So I want to highlight that because we need the utility to act. We need you to take these concerns seriously, communicate with this company, and demand responses on what our findings have been. Agendize this, bring this back for a full, transparent public discussion. And let's fix this so that workers can have the quality of life that Angelinos currently enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huazo.
Yeah, restate your name again for me.
Teto Huazo.
Huazo?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to submit for the clerk copies of our report.
Ah, I was going to ask you if I could. I just wrote that down.
Some of you have this, but...
Someone's going to come grab them from you right now.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Triana Trailer, who will be followed by Alexa Esparza.
Welcome, Ms. Trailer.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Trina Trailer, and I am the Campaign and Coalition Manager at the Los Angeles Black Workers Center. Our mission is to increase access to quality jobs, decrease discrimination, and improve industries that employ black workers. We envision a world where black workers thrive in an equitable economy that builds healthy families and vibrant families and communities. High injury rates, occupational segregation, and dangerous levels of lead waste disposed in low-black neighborhoods is simply unacceptable. Neptune is failing its workers and the community. It is alarming to read how strongly race and gender affect wages and the reports that black workers saw only 50 cents per hour per year of real wage growth compared to over $2.50 per hour for white men in similar tenures. If these conditions were present in Los Angeles, we would count on the LA DWP and its employees to remedy them immediately. We can't allow them to linger because they're happening in another state harming another community. If you are going to deliver smart, clean, and affordable infrastructure to Los Angeles, you must investigate Neptune. Neptune workers and their neighbors in Alabama deserve clean jobs and clean communities just as much as the residents in LA DWP deserve. We respectfully urge you to investigate the findings raised in the report and should plan to agendize a report back of its findings and its upcoming Board of Commissioner meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trailer.
The next speaker is Alexa Esparza, who will be followed by Rosalie Moore.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alexa Esparza. I am the Vice President of ILWU Local 56. We do environmental hazmat and shipscaler work. After the devastating wildfires earlier this year, our rank-and-file spent weeks remediating the affected burn areas of the Pacific Palisades, clearing debris, handling hazardous materials, and doing the hard work to ensure the community was safe again. Contracted by NRC Republic Services, we removed items such as batteries, toxic materials, and other harmful contaminants for immediate disposal, which is why the alarming environmental and labor issues in JMA's report matter to our members, the community, and our brothers, sisters in our movement. Public tax dollars should never fund economic, racial, and environmental injustices harming Neptune workers and the great residents of Alabama. We respectfully urge you to investigate these findings raised in the report and ensure Neptune protects its workers, reduces pollution in the Alabama community instead of putting them at risk because solidarity means we don't trade one community's health for another. As environmental workers and union members, we believe no one is safe until we are all safe, and no community should be sacrificed in the name of progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esparza.
The next speaker will be Rosalie Moore, who will be followed by Sophia Petrowski.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rosalie Deglis-More, interning with Jobs to Move America. I'm a product of LEUSD and a lifelong Angelino, and while my parents are the DWP customers. I'm a junior studying urban and environmental policy at Occidental College, a campus just a couple minutes from Lincoln Heights, where the first smart meters are being installed. I support water-saving infrastructure in Los Angeles, but improvements here should never come at the cost of environmental degradation in Alabama. Neptune Technology Group, which makes these meters, has a record of lead disposal harming low-income black communities in Alabama alongside poor and racially segregated labor practices. I've always held the belief that cities hold the potential to drive change locally, nationally, and globally. It's why I chose the urban and environmental policy major at Occidental. But for Los Angeles to be a leading city in sustainability, LA DWP must hold Neptune accountable so that entire production process of this manufactured good ensures justice for all workers, communities, and the environment. Should Los Angeles reap the benefits of the smart meter project while Alabama pays the price? We respectfully urge you to investigate Neptune's troubling practices and agendize a full and transparent report back to the Commission at a future board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
The next speaker will be Sophia Petrowski, who will be followed by Martin Barreira.
Good morning. My name is Sophia Petrowski, and I'd like to read part of the report handed out to you all earlier. This is Aaron Ledbetter's story, a worker at Neptune Technology Group in Tallahassee. On March 12th, 2019, 50-year-old Aaron Ledbetter was working on a factory floor in Tallahassee, Alabama, when a heavy fixture from an industrial machine began to fall out of place above him. Aaron tried to stabilize it but couldn't. The fixture came down, and Aaron seriously injured his back. He says, "A 350-pound fixture fell from above my head, and I caught it and threw it off me," Aaron said. "It messed up my back." The initial treatments for his injury were ineffective, he said. The shots didn't work, nothing, therapy didn't work. Aaron, along with several other of his former coworkers, said that the industrial machines on Neptune's floor run constantly, making them difficult to maintain. By the time the fixture fell on him in 2019, Aaron said he had already undergone shots and therapy for a very similar prior injury. And yet, he kept coming back to work at Neptune, trying to make the job work for him. While Aaron's injury was severe, his dilemma is not unique. As the area's major industrial employer, Neptune looms large for many local manufacturing workers, their families, and other Tallahassee residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Petrowski.
The next speaker is Martin Barreira, who will be followed by Diana Umana.
Good morning. My name is Martin Barreira. I'm representing Jobs to Move America and our coalition partners, including the Black Worker Center, LANE, ILWU, IBW Locals 18, and 443, and more. I have a message to share from a partner from Alabama who could not make it today. I'll be playing part of his message, and my colleague after me will play the remainder of his message. And of course, we'd have a technical issue.
Not a problem. We've all been there.
Problem.
Hey, y'all. My name is Adam Keller, and I'm the Worker Power Campaign Director for Alabama Arise, statewide nonprofit coalition fighting for better policies for the people, especially those marginalized by poverty. I thought it was important to speak up regarding Neptune and its water meter manufacturing facility in Tallahassee, Alabama, particularly after reading the recent report from Jobs to Move America titled "Tradeoffs in Tallahassee: Neptune's Impact on Its Alabama Hometown." I'm a father, a husband, a lifelong Southerner, and I'm proud to be part of the Good Neighbors Alabama Coalition because I believe public funds should support the public good and because frankly, ain't tired of big companies thinking they can get away with the Alabama discount at the expense of our workers, communities, and environment. The workers at Neptune generate giant profits in their small town, and they deserve the same things all workers deserve. A good job isn't just a paycheck. It's the ability to come home for dinner, see your kids, and be part of your community. Right now, too many Neptune workers don't get that chance. Some are pushed to work 55, 60, even 70 or more hours a week. Some have gone 21 days straight without a real break. That's not family-friendly, and it's not fair. In a state with no OSHA Plan and zero state OSHA inspectors, it was troubling to read that more than 2/3 of workers surveyed reported having witnessed or experienced at least one serious injury on the job. Over 46% reported witnessing or experiencing multiple injuries during their tenure at Neptune. Now, we know that when workers have a voice on the job, they're more able to speak up about unsafe conditions with less worry about retaliation. Unfortunately, workers at Neptune report all sorts of mistreatment in a climate of fear that is all too common in Alabama workplaces. Neptune workers deserve to come home safely, not only provide for their families but spend time with them. They deserve to be treated with respect, to have a voice, retire with dignity after a lifetime.
You can finish the other half of that message if it's more convenient.
Sure.
...of hard work and to earn honest, equitable wages. We don't need to wear down Alabamians to provide water for Californians. This company has the opportunity to partner with the community, address these issues, and ensure their success also benefits the workers and neighbors while protecting our environment. An opportunity to lead by example with a better path to shared prosperity. I hope Neptune will do the right thing, come to the table with real solutions, and partner with us to help Tallahassee and Alabama thrive. It's what a good neighbor would do. Solidarity forever, y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barreira. And thanks for respecting our time by trying to split that up for us.
The next speaker is Diana Umana.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Diana Umana. I am with the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, or LANE, and we work in coalition with community, environmental, and labor organizations. And we're joining our colleagues at JMA today to continue raising these concerns about Neptune. DWP is paying for and receiving installing water meters made under unsafe and racially segregated conditions that deserve to be investigated and responded to. Our tax dollars are supporting a vendor who's neglecting to keep its workforce safe and report... And the report from JMA outlines how even one of the better-paying jobs in Tallahassee, Alabama, is still harming the lives of workers and their families' injury after countless injury. If these conditions were present in Los Angeles, we would count on DWP and its employees to remedy them immediately. We can't allow them to linger because they're happening in another state harming another community. Urging again, DWP should be investigating these findings raised in the report and should plan to agendize a report back of its findings at an upcoming Board of Commissioners meeting. We look forward to hearing you discuss the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Umana.
The board received two ecomments, which were distributed to every member of the dais. Public comment is now closed at this time.
Okay, we have some very simple comments that we'd like to address to you. I know some of my fellow commissioners have some things to say. We might also hear from the water system, too. I'll just open it up if that's okay.
Thank you. I was going to say age before beauty, and I'm glad I'm speaking first. First, as to the remarks that were just made, essentially, it is a model in how you would present to any board, and I appreciate it. You have your documents. You stated whatever you cared to say, and we can read it and consider it. So in that regard, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'd like to think that it has something to do with our UCLA lawyer over there in your midst. But thank you anyway for your courtesy. Obviously, irrespective of your words today, there's no action this board can take today. And I greatly appreciate the fact that you have given us something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. George, did you want to go next?
Yeah, I'll just say very briefly, to echo Wilma's comments, thank you so much for being here. This is exactly the point of this meeting, and your presentation was really beautiful and thoughtfully considered. And it's always so gratifying from this side of the dais to see people working in coalition and in true community across, you know, various groups, across state lines. Having done some of these sort of style of reports myself, I know how difficult they are to put together, especially relying on witness testimony and information from within institutions, excuse me, that can be very difficult to penetrate. I've also done a lot of work on water and racial justice advocacy in Alabama myself, where, you know, many people are surprised to find that, you know, tens of thousands of people still don't have access to running water or flush toilets, many of them black, many of them in the cradle of the civil rights movement in places like Lowndes County. And so, I am, you know, personally aware of how difficult the operating atmosphere in that state can be. A couple things in response to your testimony, noting that there's really nothing procedurally the board can do for you today since this contract isn't in front of us. First, just to let you know, we are aware of the concerns at Neptune, and we're aware of your report, and now we're really grateful to have a copy. And I know management is looking deeply into this issue and speaking sort of across functions here at the Department, trying to figure out a way to solve it and to honor the information that you've brought to us, to verify it and to honor it. My understanding is that we're already having meetings with JMA. Those meetings will continue. We absolutely will report back on what action is taken in response to the information that we receive and verify. But ultimately, we really want to encourage you, if you haven't already, to also report this to the relevant federal and state regulatory agencies, USCPA, OSHA, Department of Labor in Alabama and federally. I know that we're at a time of, you know, tremendous anxiety and the loss of trust in our public institutions, but those institutions aren't going to keep working for us if we stop working them. So we do need to rely on our federal and state partners. And by submitting those and having our federal and state partners, you know, hopefully carry out their own investigations, it also empowers agencies like us to make specific decisions that otherwise we would be constrained by law to make. So the more you can spread the word beyond this room, the more helpful it'll be internally to give us flexibility. I know Narit would like to say something.
Yeah, thank you. After the comments at the last board meeting, I requested a copy of the report, so I have had it and reviewed it, and it's now also with all of our Commissioners. As Commissioner McGraw mentioned, staff have met with JMA. We do take this very seriously. You know, I share your commitment. Our whole board shares the commitment to equity and justice, and that is beyond how we treat our own workers. It definitely has to do with our supply chain. I actually work in sustainability and teach sustainability, including these supply chain issues. So I just want to really emphasize how seriously I take this. It was a distressing report to read. You know, there was a lot that stood out to me, including some of the racial disparities, but also this statistic that was just mentioned, where 78% or more than 78% of employees had witnessed a serious injury or experienced one themselves. So please know that we are taking this seriously. We are investigating it and doing so in light of the city. The city of LA has a Contractor Code of Conduct, so that's part of what we're looking into here. And we will certainly investigate and report back to you. So mainly, just want to reiterate how seriously we take this and how much... So mainly, just want to reiterate how seriously we take this and how much we appreciate, as Commissioner McGraw said, you know, the work that has gone into this report and making us aware of that. But our clean energy and our local water transitions, again, cannot come at the expense of people in other states, and so, again, we will take this seriously. Commissioner McGraw, I'm going to save most of my comments for your last board meeting, but I just want to say, you know, how important and valuable it's been having someone on our board with both your legal background, but also your on-the-ground expertise with water equity, working across the US, with tribes, with communities that are impacted. And we really, we're going to miss you, so thank you for speaking to your own experience in Alabama as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, would you like to say something?
Yes. I so appreciate so many of you coming out today, and people from so many different sort of cultures and organizations, and just even community college, you know, representatives or students were here, learning how to really be advocates, and having had sort of some good experiences with LANE over the years and others, I just think what you're doing is important, and we're acknowledging it here, and you're being heard.
Thank you. We have a lot of very competent pitch hitters up here, pinch hitters up here at the dais today. One of them is Jonathan Leung, who runs Water Quality and is sitting in for Anselmo Collins R., a senior AGM for the water system. Jonathan, do you have anything to share before we move on?
Yeah, so, good morning, and really appreciate the JMA team coming here and presenting your findings, and also kudos for the years of dedication, over two years of following up on this matter. It takes perseverance, so thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. As was stated, we had an opportunity to meet with some of your team this past Thursday. I think that was a very productive meeting. You met with some of the water managers, as well as some of our supply chain managers. And again, you know, thank you so much for bringing these issues to our attention. One of the things we've already done is, just for background, we don't currently have any direct contracts with Neptune meters. We do have a contract with a distributor called Ferguson. So we have two contracts with Ferguson, one for new meters, positive displacement meters and smart meters, and we also have a contract with them, a smaller one, for parts, so that if we have a meter in the ground, if we have to make sure that it's accurate and adjusted for the customer, we have that contract. So we immediately reached out to Ferguson and made them aware that this report has been prepared. We expect them to read it thoroughly, and we look forward to having an opportunity to meet with them and discuss. I think we'll bring you all to the table when that discussion happens. We've also reached out to some of the Neptune staff. They have product and technology specialists here in the region that have worked with us in the past, so while that might not be at the highest level of corporate initially, we definitely want to make sure they see this report and are prepared to explain. So I think, you know, we do look forward to preparing this report for the board. I think everyone here has expressed deep interest in this. It's a very important matter that deserves thoughtful consideration, and we look forward to working with all our partners, whether that's City Attorney, Supply Chain Services. You know, our heart goes out to Talisi. You know, they might not be here in California, but we feel that same brotherhood, sisterhood, that, you know, all employees need to be treated fairly. We should all be working safely, and we should all be contributing to the positive of the environment and to the community. So we share with all that with you, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Preach, Brother Jonathan. I think in the interests of how serious this is and to honor the effort that it took to bring it here to us today, I'd prefer this to not be private briefing of individual board members, but when there is a decision and some understanding of both the facts of the case and sort of what we can or can't do based on legal constraints here, that we receive a management report at the dais in an open meeting about next steps.
I think that would be very appropriate. You won't be here to hear it, but we will.
I'll be tuning in.
Yeah, agree.
From a beach somewhere. Just kidding, I'll be home doing my other job. Do you have anything to say?
No, no, just thank you, and I second that public report request.
All right, well, with that, general public comment is closed, and we're moving on to a reporter briefing by the Chief Executive Officer and Chief Engineer. I have to say, Janice, you are looking beautiful today.
Not quite as glamorous as usual. You did say pitch hitter. I prefer to think of myself as a backup quarterback, since Janice is the Tom Brady of CEOs. Who was Tom Brady's backup? No one even knows, so here I am.
More of an Olympics guy.
Yes, sir. Copy that. So we do have, this month is National Hispanic Heritage Month, so from September 15th to October 15th, DWP proudly celebrates National Hispanic Heritage Month. This year's theme is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future. It invites us to reflect on the rich traditions, the achievements, and the lasting impact of Hispanic and Latino communities. Here at DWP, we're grateful for the inspiring influence and lasting impact of our Hispanic, Latino, and Latina employees and their contribution to our workforce today and beyond. LEDP's chapter of the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineership will be exploring the rich and diverse Latino-Hispanic culture through a series of special events that will take place throughout the month. Happy National Hispanic Heritage Month. This is also National Preparedness Month. This month, we're joining the Department of Homeland Security in recognizing National Preparedness Month. This year's theme is personal and family preparedness. It emphasizes the importance of being ready for unexpected crises and highlights our shared responsibility to support and protect one another. In recognition of National Preparedness Month, the Department's Office of Emergency Management hosted two great events last week, including an emergency preparedness webinar and an emergency preparedness fair. Thank you to the OEM office for putting on these events, and thank you to each employee who participated. Remember, prioritizing our safety does not end this month, it extends all year round. So at this time, I'll pass it to Joe Romallo for an update on our customer service.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to give you a brief update on one of the features that we are now offering to our customers, especially during high-call-volume days and times. We launched Virtual Hold on September 2nd, after a period of programming supported by our IT department as well as our customer service team. We've had about 3,000 callbacks. The way Virtual Hold works, as you probably know from your own experiences, if you call, you're given the option then, rather than to wait on hold, to receive a callback from one of our live agents. The callback time has been, on average, under an hour, about 45 minutes for the callback, but it's a lot more convenient than a customer sitting on hold. Also, there are only periodic days when we have high hold times. Our customer hold times have actually been averaging about two minutes for the last many months, which is very encouraging, and that's largely because we've been able to staff the phones. Our customers actually engage in oftentimes lengthy conversations with us because they're setting up things like pay plans or have other questions. So while our hold time has been reduced, the Virtual Hold gives our customers another option for convenience and also for us to be able to manage the call volumes. So that's all my report today. Thank you.
I recently benefited from the Virtual Hold, and it was much nicer than sitting on the phone.
Great to hear. Thank you, Joe. Jonathan, is there anything additional from the water system you'd like to share?
Yeah, thanks. So just a couple things. Number one, we are doing public outreach meetings for the Pure Water LA program. We had a meeting this past Saturday on the SEQA comments. We're also holding public workshops right now for the Urban Water Management Plan, so I think these are great opportunities, whether the folks came in from JMA, other parts of the community, they want to be aware of some of the strategic plans we're setting for long-term water supply, both with the Pure Water program and Urban Water Management Plan. I think it's a great opportunity to raise awareness and get people's comments and feedback on how we're developing those strategies. On our website, we should be advertising when some of those ongoing workshops are. Sometimes we hold them on the weekends or in the evening, just to make sure that folks can attend if they have other conflicts during the daytime. Second thing I want to report, again, I think because of a lot of emphasis and discussion about safety, employee safety, public safety, I think it's also nice sometimes to be able to highlight a positive story on safety. In our Water Distribution Division, our East Valley District actually led a chain of about 24 months with no lost-time work injury. That wrapped up this past July, but if folks can understand or visualize the heavy degree of construction and lifting and all that goes into the strains of that work we do out in the street, that's a pretty remarkable feat. So not to be outdone, our Western District now is upon 12 months of no lost-time work injury. Western District is perhaps one of our most challenging from a repair and construction standpoint because of the city streets there, a lot of infrastructure. It actually is part of the Palisades and Sunset through UCLA, but our crews are not only rising to the construction challenges there, but doing that in a safe manner. So I wanted to highlight those positive things. Thank you.
I'll underline that, you know, Commissioner Katz and I have worked really hard on the mayor's climate cabinet, getting ready for this Pure Water LA launch and supporting DWP and LA Sanan Network, and we're really excited about those public meetings, SEQA and non-SEQA input meetings, and are sort of like formally asking the folks in Los Angeles that are interested in our city's water future and on how we're going to recycle 100% of our wastewater in the coming years, that, you know, want a voice in how that process will meet out in terms of where we'll be placing lines, where water will come from, where water will go, how quickly things will be built, and where. This is your chance to really opine on all of those topics, so if that's of special interest to you, please do check out our website and our social media, where we're routinely both posting and using paid advertising to get the message out to folks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Mr. Brian Wilber, Power System Report?
Sure. Just a quick update on some general power issues. The heat wave hasn't really affected us here, right? The weather's been under control, right? Our loading's been under control, so we've had a positive response this, the past few weeks, and what we're looking forward over the next few weeks of not any major issues as regards to loading. We had a few hit pools this weekend that had some outages in Central LA and in the east side here a little bit, but nothing that was too major. We also had a transformer bank that failed at one of our receiving stations, and where this is normally a large issue for us, it's a big hit to our infrastructure, but it really only resulted in a one-minute outage for everybody involved, right? The redundancies that are put in, right, helped us restore right away, so this was a major hit for us, but it didn't really affect the customer, so you may not have heard about it at all, but it was a big thing that happened this weekend, kept a lot of our crews busy all weekend, getting this thing taken care of, so that was definitely a positive for us. It didn't affect a lot of people. Quick update on the UROC and the Palisades. We do have over 32 substructures that put in, a little over 8,700 trench feet that's in in our undergrounding there. We have more than 22,000 feet designed going in there, so things are moving forward there. The temporary power requests, this is people that are rebuilding. So looking at that, we have more than 500 requests that have come through. We have about 275 open and about 140 complete, and the rest are in a stage of completion or investigation. Just to show how quickly things are going along in the Palisades, people are rebuilding right away. A lot of those permits and a lot of those structures are getting going, so we have a lot of temporary power requests. And the last piece on the Palisades is the encroachment requests, and this is where we have existing conflicts, when people file that encroachment, right, they have existing conflicts, whether the overhead or the underground, or with our easements there. We had about 86 that are in right now, but the impressive part on that is, with the UROC in place, with them being able to go and handle these right away, the average time it's taking is just over three days to have these in, completed, and moved on, and that is a huge piece for us. Normally, that encroachment process takes months, so the UROC is doing some great jobs out there. They're handling things, getting the people in and out, and getting these taken care of right away. And then the last piece, just a reminder, October 18th is the International Lineman's Rodeo. If you've been to our rodeo here in May, the international in Kansas City is about, you know, 20 times what ours is, when we look at how many teams. We're sending five journeyman teams, five apprentice teams. This is our Super Bowl on the line series, so it is a big deal to us, right? We are sending teams, we take this very seriously. It's a great competition. If you ever get the chance to go, it's a fantastic thing to go and see. We're also sending a senior team for the first time this year, so those over 50 that are going to still be climbing poles, you know, more power to them, because it's not going to be me.
I have no doubt that you could if you wanted to, Mr. Wilber. Lots of football on the power side. Wonderful, that's really wonderful, thank you. I, you know, want to personally thank, on behalf of the board, the folks on the power system that were out restoring power over the very hot weekend. It was 90 degrees yesterday, and doing that safely. And we're all really impressed and encouraged by the progress being made in the Palisades and the reports coming out of the UROC. I'll never forget Dave Hansen saying that for the first time. I thought, it's pretty catchy. And if there's anything we can do as Commissioners to help support or speed up that process, I hope you'll let us know. That remains, you know, one of our very top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So also, pretty much everything that Power System has been dealing with for the last three weeks has been convention center-centric.
I heard about your grand appearance at City Hall.
Public execution, I think, is more. As we spent the last three weeks dealing with that, going through the various committees and council, it did get approved on Friday, so I would just like to take a second to thank all of the design engineers and drafters and the engineering management support, as we had to scramble to put reports and presentations together in a non-confusing way, briefing me every day, so I really do appreciate the hard work of everyone on the engineering side. We do operations very well. As Brian reported, sometimes we forget to thank those working behind the scenes, so thank you to all the engineers, draft, and all the tech, admin, and clerical support to be able to get that done. And Commissioner McGraw, we will miss you. You've been--
How much?
A lot. Let me quantify that with an engineer. Could you come to the podium? You've always been an advocate of ours, and quite often, we have folks that we're explaining things to that may not really be interested in what we do in the power system, but I don't feel that way with the current board and specifically the briefings we've had with you. Purchasing property, we've been able to do some things that we haven't been able to do for 20 or 30 years with you here, so from the power system, thank you very much, sir. And that's my report.
I hope you cry on October 14th.
I will.
I don't think that was nearly showing enough.
I will.
Excellent, thank you so much. Now we turn our attention to our esteemed radio advocate, Mr. Tim O'Connor, and the OPA.
Thank you, Kishan McGraw, and good morning. I only have three items to just elevate today, nothing on anything agendized. I do want to first take a moment to introduce a new colleague from the Office of Public Accountability, Marisa Brennan. If you could please stand, Marisa. Marisa joins us from the US Department of Energy, where she was working with the Office of Clean Energy Development, and particularly around the pathways to commercial liftoff report for hydrogen, which this department has some keen interest in seeing materialized, as well as working with the Milken Institute, where she was working on clean energy finance and innovative finance issues. And so, look forward to Marisa, this is her second week on the job, being an active participant in this going forward. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Second, I do want to elevate that recently, we saw the passage of two important pieces of legislation in Sacramento. One of those focusing on regionalized energy markets, and those issues obviously very relevant to the department here as we think about our decarbonization journey and the opportunities that a day-ahead energy market will create for the utility. I know that LEDP has had an active role in these conversations, and there's many that are celebrating the successes of these pieces of legislation passing, and I look forward to seeing, obviously, reports and analysis, you know, from the department, how it's going to take advantage of this tremendous opportunity to cut costs, to leverage energy trading, and to really help the region move forward on its clean energy goals, and would look forward to upcoming reports from the department on the kind of successes that it's going to help get materialized out of those. The final thing is, we have been participating in those workshops on pure water, the public participation workshops. We've also been working a lot as we take in information from customers about challenges that they're seeing with the utility. I just want to call out that what we're seeing from the department in terms of its public engagement strategy, its follow-through on consumer complaints, has really been quite exemplary, and we see, you know, this department as a strong partner with the Office of Public Accountability, and just want to call out, you know, the great job we're seeing, you know, from those public participation hearings as relates to pure water, and also from individuals like Joe Romallo and his team, you know, working with our office on following up on customer issues, and just look forward to that, those conversations and relationship continuing. So thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move to items to consider for approval, but first, we're pulling item N8 for some additional diligence, so you can take that off your list. And we have some, I have some quick questions. Are there any items any board members would like to call special?
Not at this time, other than eight, thank you.
Excellent. I just have a couple quick questions for item N2, and I suppose this question would be to you, Joe. Does this relate to that pilot program we've been hearing about from David Jaco?
It relates to all of our mass-market customer programs, so for commercial customers, yes. This is the engineering support for things like energy audits, energy efficiency calculation support. There's oftentimes an uneven distribution of applications, and so they provide the backup services to assist with those calculations. services to assist with those calculations on the engineering side.
Okay, that's super helpful, thanks so much. And a quick on N10 for you, Jonathan. Obviously we, we heard about this in public comment, is there anything you'd like to add on this contract? My understanding is that the previous contract had some pretty significant safety violations that we couldn't investigate until after the contract was approved.
Yeah, I, I think I want to invite our water distribution director, John Cox, or his team to quickly come up and discuss. I don't know the particulars about the, any safety on the past incident, but maybe they can give a quick recap of how we've gotten to this point as far as our recommendation of award for, for group two here on this contract.
That would be helpful, thank you, gentlemen.
Hi, I'm Earl Moosberger, I am manager of water distribution, construction support and procurement. And how we got here, we looked at the safety scores and they're broken down into different categories. And the difference between the two contractors, it had to do with the actual safety statistics. So those are more the OSHA reports, the description of, of the actual injuries and things like that, as opposed to their safety programs. So we looked very, very closely at that and we also did consider the impacts that this could have on future contracting.
Future contracting beyond this particular individual or his-
In the future. So this is a five-year contract. It's a, it's a one year where we're obligated to spend 25% of the first year and then the following four years are optional years. So they're typically five years.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions on this one?
I do not.
Excellent, thanks for trotting up here, I appreciate it. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so-
All right, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. A motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10 and 11.
Do we have a second?
I will second it.
Okay, Commissioner Pinder's seconding, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
Vice President McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinder?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion adopted.
Excellent, thank you, Shante. I'm not aware of any management reports today, so I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any reports on committee activity.
Um, not at this time, thank you.
So I remain on the retirement, on the retirement board. And we did meet to interview applicants to replace the retiring Betty Johnson who'd been on for a number of years. As to the final person, I will let that be announced by the board president of retirement in a day or so, I believe he, he may have that report. But anyway, it was an honor to be able to represent the board on the retirement selection. And to this person is a retiree. The other persons are current employees and then myself as the commissioner. So the retirement system, which every person in here who's going to retire one day, who's a DWP employee, that, you care about that department quite a bit. And I cannot tell you all the investments and the questions and the things that we ask to make sure that that money is there and growing. I like to say that I represent people on that retirement board who haven't been born yet, don't know they're going to work for DWP yet, but when they get here and retire, I already have their money. That's how far ahead you have to think when it comes to retirement money.
Excellent, thank you so much, Wilma.
Actually, Commissioner McGraw, I will give a brief report. Commissioner Lehrer and I met with the team in charge of our turf replacement and LEAP programs to discuss biodiversity integration in these programs and are currently reviewing some of the plant lists and other materials. So that, that was an excellent meeting and also wanted to note that the website shared during that meeting on the landscape programs, I was able to highlight in a meeting with state water board colleagues as really a, a best practice example from different utilities around the state. So really appreciate Terrence and the team for that meeting and look forward to continuing to work to ensure that biodiversity is integrated in our customer programs, especially those related to landscape. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And I have two brief updates. The first is on personnel relations. We won't be scheduling any additional hearings at the board level for now because of my departure. It'll take a second for us to figure out who will be filling committee seats, which of course is Richard's job. Once that seat is filled, we'll get back to scheduling those final level grievance hearings. If you or someone you know has a grievance in that process and has concerns about that timing, please do reach out to the commission office and we'll keep you as updated as we can with information. Of course, anytime there's a replacement of a commissioner, it does take some time for the mayor to make her decision and appointment and to get that person both into the office, into a committee structure and then prepped to, to lead a committee hearing or to participate in a committee hearing. I mean, that committee requires two members. The other committee that I chair is the Tribal Engagement Committee. I'm very grateful to Commissioner Katz and to the mayor's office, especially the Energy and Environment Director, Luis Gutierrez, who accompanied me last week up to the Owens Valley to meet with our five important tribal partners up there. Commissioner Katz will be taking over as chairperson of that committee, which only has a single commission member on it. And all of the work that we've been doing on things like land sales and land leasing, the preservation of cultural resources, tribal oversight of our construction, additional conversations around things like historical water rights and biodiversity and the names that we use for specific places, tribal co-management of lands, all of those are now in the trusted and capable hands of Commissioner Katz, who will keep that work moving forward. And so we wanted to make sure that that message was heard loud and clear by our tribal partners in the Owens Valley and that there was a, a clean handoff. And I'll be doing the work over the next month to share that same message with our tribal partners down here in the L.A. basin. That's it in terms of reports by commissioners on committee activity. Before we continue to file items in minutes, Ben, let me know that we have a public commenter who'd like to make one final public comment on a non-agendized item. We'll allow that today since it's such a brief meeting. Can you please announce the commenter for us?
I have not received the card, I apologize.
Okay, in that case, come on up, tell us who you are and what you got for us.
I did submit a card on item F, which was Mr. O'Connor's report. Somewhere it should be there. I'm Madeline Janis, I spoke earlier from Jobs to Move America. I wanted to comment on the, Mr. O'Connor's report from last week on the smart meter project that's coming up. So this report, which we very much support, which is starting in September, homes and businesses in Lincoln Heights neighborhood will begin receiving the next generation of what are also known as advanced metering infrastructure, which are also smart meters. And the beginning, this is the beginning of a citywide program to replace these, the old meters that wastewater, that waste energy within smart meters like the ones made by Neptune Technologies. And I just wanted to point out that, and I know quite a bit about procurement law, that you do have under the Office of Management and Budget regulations, in particular 2 CFR 200.318 and 319, you have the authority to attach conditions to future purchases. So conditions, for example, of submitting the wages and benefits of the future workers who are building, build the equipment, as well as conditions related to the environmental condition, environmental standards they will use in the production. You have that authority going forward. So I just wanted to point out that there really are two avenues for you to take action around this important and super beneficial smart meter replacement program. And that is to investigate the contracts you currently have, but then to look at attaching policy to your request for proposals to ensure that going forward, you are essentially creating the playing field for any company that apply to sell these meters to you. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I understand we have a filed item from our fearless finance leader, Ms. Anne Santilli.
Hi, good morning, Commissioner. The June activity, the June investment activity report has been filed and that will be covered in our next investment committee report, which I believe will be in January.
Excellent, thank you very much. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the prior board meeting, September 9th, 2025.
Should I have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
Vice President McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinder?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion adopted.
Excellent. Do any of my colleagues have any motions for future consideration they'd like to introduce at the time?
I do not.
Great. And do we have any neighborhood councils' impact statements on file?
No community impact statements or formal positions were filed by any neighborhood councils on any of the agenda items.
Excellent. In that case, Ben, will you take us into closed session, please?
I just want to confirm, I, we did not approve item eight. Was that pulled or was it special where-
It's pulled.
Postponed?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Ben.
The board- Shall we set some closed session for public council? The board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with section 54957.1 of the California Government Code. Thank you all for being here.[1301.73]
Thank you all for being here.